Thank you all for being here. We will start with our customary review of the Robert's Rules. Robert's Rules of Order are the basic rules of order for this meeting, except where Vermont law takes precedent. All motions, remarks, and discussion must be addressed to the moderator. I will do my best to recognize you in the order that you have raised your hands. You must always be recognized to speak. After being recognized, please stand up, then give your name and use the microphone. We have an extra one here that will get circulated so that you can be heard by everyone. Remarks are limited to five minutes. An article must be moved and seconded by the body, then restated by the moderator before it is under consideration and debate on the article may begin. The person who makes the motion has the privilege to speak first. Articles may have only one amendment at a time associated with them, and amendments to an article likewise may only have one amendment at a time associated with them. After you've spoken on a particular topic, you will not be recognized the second time during the discussion on that article or amendment until all other voters who wish to speak on the issue for the first time are given the opportunity to do so. You are only allowed to speak twice on any given article. My role as the moderator is to help you accomplish the business you intend to do. Please raise your hand and ask questions if you don't understand what is happening or if you think what is happening is wrong for some reason or if you want to do something and not quite sure how to proceed. We'll work our way through it. At this time, I would ask anyone who is not a registered voter in the town of Fairfield to raise your hand. Thank you. As I'm sure you're aware, unless there is a suspension of articles or a suspension of the rules, you may not vote or speak on the articles. I'd now like to call our 2025 Town Meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd now like to offer a moment of silence for fellow townspeople and friends and neighbors who are no longer with us. Thank you. I'll now read the warning. The inhabitants of the town of Fairfield, Vermont, who are legal qualified voters in the town of Fairfield are hereby warned and notified to meet at Veterans Hall in the Village of Fairfield Center on Tuesday, the fourth day of March 2025, at 10 o'clock in the forenoon to transact the following business. Article one, to elect a moderator for a one-year term. Article two, to receive the various reports of the officers of the town as contained in the current town report. Article three, to elect from the legal voters of said town the following officers: one select person for a term of three years by ballot, one select person for a term of two years by ballot, one auditor for a term of three years by ballot, one library trustee for a term of three years, one library trustee for a term of two years, a first constable for a term of one year. Article four, shall property taxes be due and payable on the first Friday in the month of November? Article five, shall the voters approve the 2025 total general fund expenditures of $1,919,685, of which $1,214,445 shall be raised by taxes and $705,240 by non-tax revenues. Previous year total expenditures were $1,828,000, of which $1,179,44 were raised by taxes and $648,956 by non-tax revenues. Article six, shall the voters approve 2025 expenditures of $193,037 for the Bent Northrop Memorial Library, $136,159 of which shall be raised by taxes and $56,878 by non-tax revenues. Previous year total expenditures were $176,589 for the Bent Northrop Memorial Library, $136,159, of which was raised by taxes and $40,430 by non-tax revenues. Article seven, shall the voters approve $120,000 for the support of the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department? Set appropriation only to be paid by the town upon condition that the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department submit to the town by November 1st, 2025, a copy of its most recent balance sheet and bank statement for review by the town auditors. Previous year, $117,225. Article eight, shall the voters approve $18,000 in support of the Fairfield Community Center Association? Previous year, $18,000. Article nine, shall the town exempt from taxation real estate owned by the Fairfield Community Center and commonly known as Meeting House on the Green for a period of five years in accordance with Title 32, Section 3840? Article 10, shall the voters approve a donation of $3,971 for the VNA and hospice of the Southern Region? Formerly Franklin County Home Health Agency, previous year was $3,971. Article 11, shall the voters approve a donation of $600 for Cat Crusaders of Franklin County, Inc.? Previous year, $600. Article 12, to transact any other non-binding business that may properly come before this meeting. Article 13, to adjourn. Article one is on the floor to elect a moderator for a one-year term. Thank you. Can I accept it? Okay. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no objections, I would ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Bridgette Harrigan-Ribbit as moderator for one-year term. Article two, to receive the various reports of the officers of the town as contained in the current town report. I'd entertain a motion. Motion made by Susan Magnan, for a second. Second by Sarah Toof. All favor of receiving the various reports of the officers-- or, excuse me, discussion. Is there any discussion on the reports? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor of receiving the various reports of the officers of the town as contained in the current town report. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Are the three to elect from the legal voters of said town the following officers? The floor is open for nominations for one select person for a term of three years by ballot. Tom Harrigan has been nominated. Is there a second? Damien Boukpower is second, sir. Tom Harrigan has been elected-- or nominated for a select person for a term of three years by ballot. Hearing none, I would move to ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Tom Harrigan for a select person for a term of three years. Congratulations, Tom. Now, the floor is open for one select person for a term of two years by ballot. Open for nominations. Brian Newby has been nominated by Tom Harrigan and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no objections, I would move that the clerk casts one ballot for Tom Harrigan-- or, excuse me, for Brian Newby for a select person for a term of two years by ballot. Congratulations, Brian. Floor is now open for nominations for one auditor for a term of three years by ballot.
I nominate Diane Tracy.
I'm sorry.
I nominate Diane Tracy.
Diane Tracy has been nominated. Is there a second? There.
I second Diane Tracy.
Diane's been nominated and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no objections, I would ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Diane Tracy for an auditor for a term of eight years. Congratulations, Diane. Nominations are now open for a library trustee for a term of three years.
I'd like to nominate Larry Ellison for a term of three years in the library.
Larry Ellison has been nominated. Is there a second? Sharon Toof has seconded. Are there any other nominations for a library trustee for a term of three years? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I would ask the clerk to cast a ballot for Larry Ellison as library trustee for a term of three years. Congratulations, Larry. Floor is open for nominations for one library trustee for a term of two years.
Susan Casamant-Magnan.
Susan Casamant-Magnan has been nominated. Is there a second? Seconded by-- Amy.
Larry Ellison.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I would ask the clerk to cast a ballot for Susan Casamant-Magnan for a library trustee for a term of two years. The floor is now open for nominations for a first constable for a term of one year.
James Constantino.
James Constantino has been nominated by Damien Boukpower. Is there a second? I'm sorry.
Charles Mudgeon, second.
James Constantino has been nominated and seconded. Is there any other nominations on the floor? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I would ask the clerk to cast a ballot for James Constantino as first constable for a term of one year. Congratulations, James. Moving on to Article four, shall property taxes be due and payable on the first Friday in the month of November? I'd ask for a motion.
Susan Magnan will make that question.
Susan Magnan will make the motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by--
Dan Futter.
Dan Futter. Motion is approved and seconded. Shall property taxes be due and payable on the first Friday in the month of November? End of session for discussion. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, we're ready to vote. All right. There were the questions. All favor of property taxes being payable on the first Friday in the month of November? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article five, shall voters approve the 2025 total general fund expenditures of $1,919,685, of which $1,214,445 shall be raised by taxes and $705,240 by non-tax revenues? Previous year total expenditures were $1,828,000, of which $1,179,44 were raised by taxes and $648,956 by non-tax revenues? I would entertain a motion. Thank you, Paula Boukpower News, for approving the 2025 total general fund expenditures. Is there a second? Seconded by Vanessa. Any discussion? Our votes are being seconded. Shall the voters approve the 2025 total general fund expenditures of $1,919,685, of which $1,214,445 shall be raised by taxes and $705,240 by non-tax revenues? What was the discussion?
Before we vote, on behalf of the Select Board, I'm going to give a kind of a budgetary highlights. On behalf of Chair Thomas Horgan, Vice Chair Gavin Ryan, our clerk, David Pearson, who's got the flu, and thank you for not with us on both sides, myself, Brian Newby, at least did the town report for 2024. Let's start with some important recognition. I'd like to have you all please join me in a round of applause for our town road crew, Mo, Chibi, Jay, and James for their dedication and hard work to keep our vote. I would like to thank our town administrator Cathy Ainsworth, our town clerk Linda Hoden, our town treasurer Amanda Forbes, our laundry director Sarah Allerton, and Melissa Manson as our chair, Langin and Tony. Thank you. Actually, this is some of the highlights of the town budget. For those who don't know, we start all-day session in December. We look at our expenditure for last year. We look at our budget for last year. And then we build this year based on that kind of historical. We fine-tune it in January. And what you see before you today is the kind of subtotal of that process. It represents a 3.2% overall increase for the taxpayers. We think it's responsible. We had some challenges like all of you on healthcare, rising healthcare costs for the town and also cost of living were our primary challenges. The majority of our budget is focused on maintaining around 84 miles of town roads. Fairfield is, I think, the second in the state for the amount of town roads for a town. So that's driving our budget. Some of those high-- some of those areas are-- $256,450 for winter maintenance, $198,000 for summer maintenance, $142,750,000 for road reconstruction projects that launch it throughout the year, $155,000 for baby projects, and $372,500 for town road equipment. And that's the lion's share of our budget for the town. Our budget also strives to maintain our town building, which includes the town office, the town garage, the fire department, East Fairfield Community Center, the old town clerk's office, which we're renting and generate revenue, Chester's, and our common school. We've had a busy year in the Select Board. We hired a new zoning administrator. His name is Robert Kern, Ern Kerman. We opened a new dog ordinance and hired a new town animal control officer. Her name is Sarah Courier. We want to thank our outgoing animal control officer, David Pearson, who isn't with us. But I'd like to give a round of applause for all of you. There's a lot of phone calls from surrounding-- not just her, but everybody. Surrounding communities at all times. We also, as a result of community input past the public nudity ordinance, we acquired a new piece of property on Fairfield Lawn and the outlet for the bargain price of $1 from the Village of Swan. It's a 2.28 lot. It's a nice lot. We're grateful for the Village of Swan. On behalf of the town, the Select Board also want to formally announce that we are going to offer for sale the following parcels. And this will be public information on our website or the town office. So don't feel like you won't-- there will be a lot more information. But the following parcels are going to be sold this year. The first parcel, 169 Sherman Street. The second parcel is 277 Very Wild Road. The third parcel is 4142 North Road. The fourth parcel is 1176 Roamar Road. These properties will be listed. They're on the town clerk's website on the parcel map. And you can get all the details of the surveys, their acreages, and even the deeds on the town website. We're going to work with our attorney to make sure we do the sale in accordance with town state law, which is pretty straightforward. These properties were either acquired by the town-- two properties were given to the town and two properties were acquired as a result of a tax sale. And there's a little bit of details on exactly-- the town won't profit from the sale if it's a tax sale. But we will figure out the savings. Our primary motivation is get these properties back on the grant list so that private citizens can build homes or do what they're going to do with those properties. We on the Select Board are pleased, honored to serve you. Please join us on the fourth or-- second or fourth Monday of each month at 7 o'clock at the town office for our meetings. And we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have before we take the vote on the motion for you. If there's any questions.
Can you please speak part of a-- can you please speak to the non-tax revenue money?
Yeah, the tax-- the non-tax revenue is, for instance, state share for our roads, our town roads. We get revenue from the state for every mile of the town road. We get-- and I think that's a large share of non-tax revenue.
For any of that money, federal money, that you want to outcast?
Not for this budget. No, I think everything for this budget is-- well, before I make that firm statement, I'm pretty sure that it is non-anticipating federal grants for what I just-- maybe the ranger's over here to back me up.
We just see Alaska, so we should speak to the county board.
Yeah, the revenues are on the second page of the town report. And I think maybe you're talking about the ARPA funds. ARPA funds have already been received and spent and audit has been performed on that-- those transactions. Kathy, why don't you-- and Kathy's asking-- she's a resident of Sheldon.
If I were to just open up the rules to allow Kathy to speak to a question, I'll hear-- is my-- any opposition? Thank you. Hi, I'm Kathy Ainsworth, town administrator at Fairfield. And during the year of when we disclosed, 2024, we received the very last part of a long-term FEMA grant that started with the Halloween storm. So that money is-- was included in last year's budget. This year, we don't anticipate a federal grant, but we do always apply for grants. So the State of Vermont and other entities have grants available. I look at them. I make sure that they-- if they seem appropriate, we'll write them. And it's a competitive process. So those are usually state grants. But in terms of federal funds, we don't have money coming in at this point. The ARPA funds that you were mentioning was also a multi-year process with federal government. And we extended the rest of that money this year. Any other questions on grants? Thank you.
Any other questions before we vote for this Select Board? Okay, thank you very much.
Any other discussion on the article? Or are we ready to follow questions? All right. All in favor of approving the 2025 total general fund expenditures of $1,999,685, of which $1,214,445 shall be raised by taxes and $705,240 by non-tax revenues? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article six, shall the voters approve 2025 expenditures of $193,037 for the Bent Northrop Memorial Library, $136,159 of which shall be raised by taxes and $56,878 by non-tax revenues? Previous year total expenditures were $176,589 for the Bent Northrop Memorial Library, $136,159 of which were raised by taxes and $40,230 by non-tax revenues? I would entertain a motion. Buster.
Articulating so--
I don't know, Van, for a second. Seconded by Julie Volker. Shall the voters-- we've had motion and second for the voters to approve 2025 expenditures of $193,037 for the Bent Northrop Memorial Library, $136,159 of which shall be raised by taxes and $56,878 by non-tax revenues? Floor is open for discussion. Our library representative, Sarah Alton, would like to speak to a question. All favors extending the rules to Articulso. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
In opposition, you say no.
Yeah, I wouldn't say all of this, but nice to see you today. This is going to be quick and easy because it's all the news. We've had another fantastic year at the library and we continue to provide outside services to this small community because compared to other libraries and towns like ours, we are opening door hours, having more borrowers, higher circulation, more programs and attendance, and three times the number of visits per year. And as you heard us say, we've been doing all this-- about half the staff hours of libraries in other towns with similar numbers. So as a result, we are including funding for a third staff member, 12 hours per week in the town joint project. We're really excited to welcome Tammy Johnson and deepen our staff bench at one of the busiest libraries. libraries in town. So there's three of us now, I'm full-time, and we have one with Tammy Parker, which is really great. So, but you'll want your time to take that. The headline is, as you heard us say, we won't be asking for any additional tax revenue in twenty twenty-five. We understand the pressure that taxpayers are under, and we've been really careful with planning and spending, and we fix towards of investments, and we leverage on tax revenue wherever we can, and I case on tax revenue is the earnings on our investments and some grants and some friends. So while the library budget isn't increasing nine point three percent, we're going to use earnings from the investments and some surplus funds to kind of increase, so and library portion and our taxes will stay at twenty twenty-four dollars if the budget's approved today. Just as an aside, although we're two more years out of this of the library mortgage, the mortgage on the building, which is the government's, the library and everything is in the, of the long term now, so the mortgage is almost paid off. You already voted on two trusting positions today, thank you so much, Susan and Mary, but we're also going to be welcoming Jeffrey Paff by appointment soon. He's going to fill the remainder of Peter Brenz's term. We really want to thank Peter for his long and valuable service to the library, so my apologies, my apologies. It wasn't my last words, he's down. Okay, so we do hope to see the full water in the town report, we're going to be doing a lot of long-range planning this year, looking at the next five years and beyond, so that's great, we welcome your input anytime. Be sure to check our website, sign up for the newsletter, focus on Facebook, make sure you see everything we've got going on, we've got a hard amazing program, starting some new things too, like how to sign up for it, we've got story hours, we do the D and D and craft workshops, and we go to sessions too, so check that out. My last thing is that we've got our bug sale going on, we actually have special hours today, so as soon as you leave this meeting, come on down to the library and please open the library room and support the library at the same time. So as always, I don't have any questions, so there's one thing to trust needs, I really want to thank the friends, so, and you for your support. Thank you.
Any questions for Sarah? Thank you, Sarah. Any other discussion on the library? What should I say to her?
I'll make a motion to, to approve this as stated.
We have a motion for, so. All right, any other discussion? If not.
You want to add what's here?
The call for a motion. All in favor of twenty twenty-five expenditures of one hundred ninety-three thousand thirty-seven dollars for the Van Norwood Memorial Library, one hundred and thirty-six thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars of which shall be raised by taxes, and fifty-six thousand eight hundred seventy-eight by non-tax revenues. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Thank you. Article seven. Shawville is approved one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the support of the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department. Set appropriation only to be paid by the town on condition that the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department submit to the town by November first, twenty twenty-five, a copy of its most recent balance sheet and bank statement for review by the town auditors. Previous year was one hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. I would entertain a motion. Sublode by Tom Harkin for second. Second by Paula Deen Hall. Shawville is approving a motion to come back about to support the Fairfield Volunteer Department. Set appropriation to be paid by the town on condition that the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department submit to the town by November first, twenty twenty-five, a copy of its most recent balance sheet and bank statement for review by the town auditors. Is now open for discussion. Ready for a call question? All right. All in favor of approving one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the support of the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department. Set appropriation only to be paid by the town on condition that the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department submit to the town by November first, twenty twenty-five, a copy of its most recent balance sheet and bank statement for review by the town auditors. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Ayes appear to have it. Motion carried. Article eight.
This is appropriate time for the state's fire department to call if they do have a support. I think they do a lot for education, they do a lot for community, and, and then sacrifice their own personal and family time to protect us and to serve the community in a lot of ways, and I'd like to say thank you.
Thank you. Shawville is approved eighteen thousand dollars in support of the Fairfield Community Center Association. Previous year was eighteen thousand dollars. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Paula Deen Hall in second.
Jane Hockens.
Paula Jane Hockens. Motion has been made in second. For the voters who approve these two thousand dollars in support of the Fairfield Community Center Association, and if there's discussion, comments?
If you'd like someone to speak to, go ahead.
Paula wants this to.
I would.
Your first choice. You want a microphone?
No, no, I'm good, my voice is loud. I just want you to know that they have an extremely robust meal site every Tuesday. The food shelf expands, Sunny, Sunny's ever expanding the food program and the meal site part of it, and she has expanded the food shelf. We're getting a lot of Fairfield, but there's, there's more people coming. As times get hard, they're coming, and she's complementing that by, you know, she tells the food bank that she'll take anything extra they have, and she fills our coffers as much as we can. So we just want you to know, because there's a misconception out there that you can only visit the food shelf once a month. That's not the case, and she wants people to know that you can visit that food shelf every Tuesday when it's open from twelve-thirty to five o'clock, and that you can go through the whole food shelf, not the produce section alone. It's just the USDA portion of it that you can only do once a month, so please, don't not go because you said, oh, I went two weeks ago, but I'm running low today. Please come. The beautiful meal program, and Debbie should probably be speaking for too, Debbie Carney, but the beautiful meal program is amazing. They can be feeding twenty-five people one day and forty the next. She has a very variety-filled program that repeats the same meal in an entire year, and she's trying to have people try food cuisine as well as food favorites, so just please keep visiting, it makes a difference. And the meal site is by donation only, so some people just like me give five dollars to the meal, but it's donations, so some people can't pay, but they still, that's okay. We want you to come. Don't ever not come because you say, oh, I don't have money in my pocket to be able to give. We want you to come and impartate in, in to people, to people, friends, that they don't see other people, other from me to me, just in that meal place, so please know, it's always welcome, it's wide open. Come to the food shelf, come to the meal site. Today's roasted chicken, we did that here. Roasted chicken, the dessert is strawberry shortcake, so scoot on over, we've got plenty for everybody.
Susan, I, I just want a second with Paula, Seth. The food shelf is really a wonderful place. There's a huge donation that comes in every Monday from Annifers with breads and deli, deli, you know, foods and milk and butter, so yeah, make sure you're reaching out to the food shelf, this is really pretty amazing.
I'm curious, there's nothing on the panel, there's a cost, we haven't done that for the last year, I anticipate it will continue to go up as, as well, probably need, need to, would probably increase need for the food as well.
Want to speak to that? So you're right, let me just go with what everybody's talking about right now is eggs, and the bank, the food bank, that's where we get most of our, who said they can entertain giving us eggs for another three or four weeks because of places she's got. So certain things are out of our control like that. We have, and Julie Wilkert can speak to this better than I can, the food program is something, donate a certain amount of money, and then they go around to local farms and buy local beans or local pork, and add that to our coffers, and that's a direct donation. Another big thing is I was in there Sunday for three and a half hours putting away the Costco, we get once a month, Costco now, huge donation coming in, hundreds of pounds of food in that, that's in the coffers. So I've reached out to places that, you know, really are filling our coffers. Right, we have to pay for the eggs, those are the things we have to move in, those do have to pay for, and those, we've been told, like, we just got hamburger for the first time in a long time, and we don't have any other meat right now other than that hamburger. So to try to go and buy it again, she has to, they have, first of all, have a bail law, they tell us a lot of cancer. And the things that are most important, first of all, the meats and the eggs and the meat. We have a milk program, we need to buy for still a couple of weeks, so that brings solid quality eggs, you know, they have a local man who still, and some of it, as much as, what, twelve, fifteen dozen a week, right? And, and, but right now he's giving us two or three, he doesn't plan, because small people, so we're, and then we get that, we're trying to ask people to be patient, we'll take those, we break them down into six, you know, and try to avoid that, because everybody has something around it, everybody has that money, so trying to move us, but a lot of people, like, we have to go to Costco, that's, is definitely, they can't, I mean, to sell to us, yeah. So, yes.
I have a motion, would you mind if I can ask, whether the, um, you appreciate what the town could do, we know there are programs that use, and programs, um, actually programs. So that, that money that comes from that was not targeted specifically, some is used for over ten, yeah, we, we appreciate any, any funds that could come from the town, but I think we're, we're pretty creative about how we supply.
Yeah, that's a good question, though, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but it's hard to say. Like, we, we get, yeah, the local farms that we bring in from the environment, you know, I've got more than I can return even if something you're, no. And then there's times when they're really, they're close to them, and they're not going to lie, you know, just like we are right now, these children, we're dead, we're down to go, I say, we only have him, but you know, outside you don't have a store, we don't turn this up all the way, they say, kind of, people put the turkeys up, with that kind of stuff, we get by.
I just want to say, we're talking about all the activities that have gone on for the, I also want to say that I am one of the volunteers who we need to get recognition to, we're there every single week. Some of us are there at three in the morning until about two o'clock, and we need to recognize our volunteers. If anybody wants to volunteer, please come on over, but we have a great bunch of men and women, sort of volunteers, and I want to recognize them. Any other discussion or questions? Yes, name please.
For the budget, and I signed the line up for, and sort of the miscellaneous costs for that building, it'd be a very low number, so I'm curious whether or not for next year, will any of the current maintenance issues that may exist for that building need to appear on this budget, and if so, how can we anticipate that?
Who wants to speak for a question?
Yeah, so the select board has a dialogue about maintaining our buildings, this is one of the conversations we've had during the year. I don't have the numbers right off the top of my head, I'm sure you could dig them up, but the town has made significant investments in the community center, the building over the last three years, significant, and there's the, the money that, it's my understanding that the eighteen thousand dollars that we shoot for you on this item is not for the operational budget, it's for the infrastructure, maintaining the town, maintaining the building, and there's been previous investments that have rectified some shortcomings of the building, so I would just say that's a, that's kind of an ongoing responsibility, it's a very good question, it's a very good concern, we share that concern when I mentioned the others, the other buildings, the town, just like board, and the town takes great pride in maintaining the infrastructure that we have. Like the common school, that's, there's a, there's an ongoing kind of discussion about what we're going to do with the common school, it's kind of floundering, but that's an example, but the community center, we think it's in good shape as a result of the investments that we've made, and there's been a, a lot of activity upgrading this last year of the, like a backroom and some other improvements at the community center, so I would just say, stay tuned, and it'll be on the agenda going forward, make sure that our building is maintained, continue, continue to provide the great services that it does for our community.
I also wanted to mention that the town works really closely with the community center, also providing matching funds for grants, they write a lot of grants, and they receive them in areas in concert with the town supporting their efforts, so there's a really strong partnership between the business of the town and, and in terms of that building and their efforts, so I just wanted to make sure that they're recognized for that, they've got a really strong friend base.
Any other comments or discussions on my, 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 my? Ready for a question? All right. All in favor of overturning eighteen thousand dollars in support of the Fairfield Community Center Association, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying no. Ayes appear to have it. Motion carried. Article nine. Shawville town exempt from taxation real estate owned by Fairfield Community Center, commonly known as the House on Green, for a period of five years in accordance with, have referred to Section thirty-eight forty. I would entertain a motion. Jane Hockens has made a motion, is there a second? Second by Sherri Crew. All right. Shawville town exempt from taxation real estate owned by Fairfield Community Center, commonly known as the House on Green, for a period of five years in accordance with, have referred to Section thirty-eight forty. Now open for discussion. Questions? Ready for a question? Ready for a question? All right. All in favor of exempting from taxation the real estate owned by Fairfield Community Center, commonly known as being passed on the green for a period of five years in accordance with Title III to Section 3840? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Please indicate by saying no. Eyes appear to have it. Motion carried. Article 10. Shall voters approve the donation of $3,971 for the VNA and hospice of the Southern Region, formerly Franklin County Home Health Agency? Previous year was $3,971. Moved by Tom Markin in second. By Amber. Orders open for discussion. Are approving donation of $3,971 to VNA and hospice of Southern Region, formerly known as the Franklin County Home Health Agency? Yes, name please.
People, it's Southwest, I'm sure.
Southwest. Good, thank you. Any discussion? Questions? Yes. Susan, may I?
I just want to point out that the Franklin County Home Health Agency now called the VNA of Southwest is only one of two, I believe, home health agencies that serve Franklin County. So I think it's really important that it stays open and people enjoy it.
Articles? Discussion? Are we ready for a question? All in favor of approving a donation of $3,971 for the VNA and hospice of Southwest Region? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against, please indicate by saying no. Eyes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Thank you. Article 11. Shall voters approve a donation of $600 for Cat Crusaders of Franklin County, Brooklyn? Previous year was $600. I would entertain a motion. I'm sorry.
Second.
And a second?
Kathy Brennan, second.
Kathy Brennan, second, thank you. So orders open for discussion. Are the voters approving a donation of $600 for Cat Crusaders in Franklin County? Questions? Are we ready for a question? Yes, I'm sorry, again, turn over.
Is there someone present on this? Speak to it just to.
Just someone can speak to it?
Hey, I'm, you know, they trap, they were scared of cats and, um, just last night somebody let a cat fly the market. They would get up this morning to take it to a shelter. They do a lot of farmers trying to keep down the population of cats.
Yes.
I'll just add to that. I come from a farm in Illinois. And they, it's so bad what cats do to wildland populations by the ground nesting birds. So if you care about wildlife and birds, they're disappearing. It's really important to keep the cat population down because they just totally destroy ground nesting birds.
Any other comments, discussions? Ready for a question? All in favor of approving a donation of $600 for Cat Crusaders in Franklin County? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying no. Eyes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article 12. Do transact any other non-buying business that may properly come before this meeting? I would entertain a motion. The article filed is to transact any other non-buying business that may properly come before this meeting? If you make a motion, it just in second, it is only allows that article for discussion. So if you want to discuss this article, it needs to be moved and seconded.
I'll make that motion.
Susan will make the motion, is that second?
I'll second.
Understood by Jane Hopkins. All right, the article is moved and seconded. Do transact any other non-buying business that may properly come before this meeting? Open for discussion. Anything from, anyone here? If not, I think we'll simply move on. Oh, Article 13. To adjourn. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Any other need for a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Second by Sharon True. All in favor of adjourn, Article 25, company? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No? Motion appears to be carried. Thank you. And if you want a last thing that I have to tell my whole classes, please come and come out.